Good afternoon. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the City Council and County Board of Commissioners as advisory board to elected officials. You should know that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. If you wish to speak on the agenda item, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. For those who wish to speak in favor, for those who wish to speak, please state your name and your address clearly into the microphone when you come to the podium. Each side, those wishing to speak in favor of an item and those wishing to speak in opposition to an item, have ten minutes to present each side. The time will be divided amongst all persons wishing to speak. If you are here opposing or resounding tonight, you should be aware of what's called a protest petition. A protest petition can be helpful to those residents who live in the rezoning area. Please consult the planning staff for any details on a protest petition and they will be happy to help you. You should also keep in constant touch with the planning department as to when your case will go before the elected officials for a final vote. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Thank you. Can we have roll call?
Commissioner Beechwood. Commissioner Bealyn. Commissioner Bowden. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Gibbs. Vice Chair Harris.
President.
Chair Jones.
President.
Commissioner Huff. Commissioner Lamb asked to be excused on tonight. Commissioner Paget.
President.
Commissioner Smusky.
Here.
Commissioner Walters.
Here.
Commissioner Whitley.
Here.
Commissioner Wonders.
All right, thank you. And I did receive an email from Fred Davis today asking for an excuse absence. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Good evening, Commissioners. Pat Young with the Planning Department. No adjustments to the agenda, but I can certify for the record that all public hearing items before you tonight have been advertised in accordance with law and there are affidavits to that effect on file with the Planning Department. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes. David Harris.
All right. It was approved by David Harris, approved by Melvin Whitley. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Any opposition? Let it be known by raising your right hand.
Minutes have passed eleven to zero.
All right, thank you. We move down to item five, Public Hearing, Plan Amendment, Zoning Map Change Ellis Road Residential Plan Amendment A 13000008 in zoning case Z 13000026.
Good evening. I'm Hannah Jacobson with the Durham Planning Department and I'll be presenting the plan amendment case A 1300008 for Ellis Road Residential. The applicant in this case is Teague Hankins Development and they're proposing to amend approximately fifteen point five acres of the future land use map from low density to low medium density residential. This would allow the maximum density on the site to increase from four units per acre to eight units per acre. The proposal affects one parcel that's located in the suburban tier. It's on the east side of Ellis Road and north of Sohigh Drive. Here's a map showing the broader area with the future land use map superimposed on top. The Durham Freeway runs down the center of the screen and the subject site is north of the Research Triangle Park, which on the screen is shown in teal. Generally speaking, there is a ring of somewhat more intense land uses that surround the park. These include some industrial, some commercial, some office and some higher intensity residential. I would like to point out that this pink site here on the screen, which indicates office on the future land use map, is currently being developed or is, construction is near completion for some apartments. As I mentioned in the staff report, there have been a number of changes to the future land use map over time for this area. In fact, there have been two cases that were initiated and approved by the governing bodies that determined that low medium density was an appropriate use for this area. Those are listed on the screen. And in their justification statement, the applicant suggests that the requested land use pattern matches the adopted pattern in the area. It would also act as a transition between lower intensity uses further north and the higher intensity uses to the south and that it helps to form a more contiguous pattern of growth that does not overburden the existing infrastructure. So staff has reviewed the request against the four criteria for plan amendments that are found in the Unified Development Ordinance. We found that the proposed amendment is consisted with land use, consistent with land use policies, including those that deal with density and contiguous development. We also found that the proposal is not out of character with the established land use patterns or with recent development trends. It creates a logical transition from those more intense uses, including RTP and the apartment complexes to the south and to the lower intensity residential neighborhoods further north. We also determined there not to be any substantial adverse impact with regard to infrastructure, environmental protection, or with demand for future land uses. And finally, staff determined that the site is of adequate shape and size to accommodate the proposed use, so we are recommending approval of the plan amendment.
Good evening. Amy Wolf with the Planning Department. This is zoning map change case Z 1300026 for the parcel that spurred the plan amendment request. So this is, the applicant is Teague Hankins Development Corp. for Ellis Road Residential. This parcel is within the city's jurisdiction and the present designation is residential suburban twenty and the proposed designation is planned development residential at a density of seven point three four one. The site is fifteen point five three acres and not just the proposed use, but the committed use is ninety townhouses. The site is within the suburban tier at fourteen forty-three Ellis Road. It does have frontage along Ellis Road and NC 147 Highway. It's south of Rata Drive and north of Sohigh Drive and towards the bottom of this context map is the upper boundary of Research Triangle Park. The request does meet the standards of the planned development residential district. It requests a density of seven point three four one, which satisfies or accommodates the proposed ninety townhouses and it meets the other standards of the PDR district. The existing conditions on the site show that there are a couple environmental features, including stream tributaries, wetlands. There's a, wetlands are associated with the stream. There's a farm pond up towards the frontage of Ellis Road. There is also steep slopes towards the rear of the site as well as other conditions on the site. It's mostly forested. There's a residential structure towards Ellis Road and a power line that splits the site approximately in the middle. The proposed condition shows two building envelopes, one on either, one on either side of the stream tributaries. There's a site access point, one on Ellis Road, and there's actually, there's two others for cross access easement to the northern parcel, so a total of three access points. The tree coverage area is shown, including areas within the stream buffers as well as along NC 147, as well as a possible stream crossing at this location. There's a number of commitments. Ninety townhouses is the maximum unit count and housing type. Again, one potential stream crossing. There's actually three site access points. One site access point onto Ellis Road, two are cross access, cross access to the parcel to the north, impervious surface at seventy percent and tree preservation at twenty percent. The graphics that you see on the proposed map that I showed you are all committed, as well as there's four text amendments, including the housing type, dedication of rideaway along Ellis Road frontage, improvements associated with turning into the site, I have site access one, and accommodating the bicycle lane by providing four additional feet of asphalt. The request is not consistent with the future land use map. As we've heard, the request for the plan amendment, it is, this should be no, for not consistent with low density residential, but it is, does satisfy the other policies of the comprehensive plan. And staff determines that should the plan amendment be approved, this request would be consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one person signed up to speak for, Mr. Jared Edens.
Good evening. Jared Edens with Edens Land Corp. here representing Tom Hankins with Teague Hankins Development. I'll be very brief. I don't have much to add beyond the staff report that Hannah and Amy summarized. Would you think this would be a nice transition between the apartments to the south and the single family to the north? The site will also provide another housing option. That corridor of Ellis Road, I'm not aware of any townhomes available in that corridor of Ellis Road, so we thought townhomes would make a lot of sense on this property. We had a neighborhood meeting on September third and we had three people in attendance. There's no opposition that I'm aware of. Again, short and sweet. Glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. No one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do we have anyone sign up to speak? Mr. Smusky?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick question for Hannah or anyone who can answer it. What is the density of the apartment, apartment complex being built?
I'm not positive of the exact density, however, they can go to a maximum of ten and a half in the O and I zoning district.
Okay, so, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Edens, everything on this property seems to be either a hill or a swamp. I was curious how you're going to build on these hills? Are you gonna have to grade everything? Are you gonna be able to terrace it a bit?
I mean, typically for a townhome development, there's, there does end up being quite a bit of grading because you got larger paths for the townhomes will have driveways, parking aisles, things like that, so. I mean, I've seen worse sites, that's for sure. All the good land was built on a long time ago.
Oh, of course.
But, I mean, we will, we'll be staying out of the wetlands and the, and the stream buffer. We'll have one crossing shown on the plan, but the rest of it will be preserved or remain preserved.
Mr. Gibbs.
This question is for you too. I have, I think we all may have gotten contacts by, from different people about historical aspects of this site and some of the naturalist things, like certain animals, certain fauna and flora, I guess I should say. If these were that important, I would think that something would have been designated by this point, so. And I'm only mentioning that because that has been one of the comments that, that have been made, but beyond that, my question as a follow-up to the previous one, rather than extreme grading, I would assume that you would be developing, for instance, roadways, driveways, roadways sort of parallel to the, to the contours to, and whatever other methods to minimize runoff. I don't know what value this land, this wetland down here is, but it seems to be, it's, there seems to be great effort in trying to preserve that and, and to stay away from it, so to minimize impact on that, would it be a safe assumption that you would be, terracing, I guess would be a better description for the development, since it all does drain down to this bottom land?
Yeah, I mean, just generally in any design we do, we try to minimize earthwork because earthwork equals cost.
Right.
And no one wants to incur the cost. And with the kind of topo you're looking at here, you're, you're gonna have different finished floor elevations of townhomes as it goes down across the site, definitely. So you're not, you're not looking at a, you know, big Walmart pad where everything's at one elevation. There's gonna be definitely tearing as you go down the grade, just to minimize earthwork, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, yes ma'am, go ahead.
This is a question for staff. Most of us got that email asking about the, or commenting on the diversity of plants and animals on this site. What triggers a review by the natural heritage? What, what triggers that review?
There's a, a resource we have called, it's a long title, Natural Inventory of Plants, Species, Animals, that we use as our resource. There's a map that goes along with that and we, we do review those maps in, to see if any of the applications we have in correspond to any mapped location. This site did not fall on any map and that, that was the basis of our review and to provide any information, we don't have it.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of plan amendment A 1300008.
All right. Moved by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Beechwood. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.
Motion has passed, twelve to zero.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of zoning case Z 1300026.
All right, moved by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Smusky. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Any opposition?
Motion has passed, twelve to zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move down to item six A, Crowsdale Commons, case Z 1300024.
Mr. Chair, before we start on this one, I resign, well, I report to work at this location and there would be no financial gains by me by sitting in on this, but I did want to let you know that I do report to work at eighteen twenty-one Hillendale Road.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Amy Wolf with the Planning Department. This is case Z 1300024, Crowsdale Commons. The applicant is Glendale Hillendale Company, LLC. It is within the city's jurisdiction. The present designation of the site is Commercial Center. The requested designation is Commercial General with a development plan and the site is eight point seven five one acres. The proposed use is one hundred and nine thousand four hundred square feet of non-residential uses. The site is in the urban tier. It is three parcels at eighteen twenty-one, eighteen twenty-three, and eighteen fifty-five, Hillendale Road. It's between West Carver Street to the north and Front Street to the south, which is on the north side of Interstate eighty-five and the interchange of Hillendale Road and Interstate eighty-five. It is just south of the watershed protection overlay, which you see on this context map in the blue. The requested designation of Commercial General has lot standards and it is reviewed on the urban tier, which is, we don't typically see a request in the urban tier, so the difference that we would typically see that I'd like to point out is a maximum street yard of fifteen feet. This, this slide is an error. It should be a maximum street yard of fifteen feet and then all the other setbacks are as we would typically see in a suburban area. This site meets those, the criteria for this district. The existing conditions are shown here. It is the former Lowman's Plaza, presently known as Crowsdale Commons. It is, from what I could tell on the site plan, ninety-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-one square feet of office and commercial uses. You can see three buildings here and the appropriate site layout with site access points. The proposed plan shows the same site access points and it does satisfy the requirements of a development plan. The difference, I would say, that this site is showing an additional square footage for development for building uses. Again, the maximum would be a hundred and nine thousand four hundred square feet, which is just over ten thousand greater than what is there today. There's a number of commitments, maximum floor area I just mentioned, six site access points, maximum impervious surface at ninety-five percent. There's no text commitments associated with this. Graphically, the commit, everything you see is committed, including the location of the access points and the building envelope. There's a number of design commitments that the applicant is required to address. We don't have criteria for reviewing those, but the applicant has provided what was asked for the standards for design commitments. This request is consistent with the commercial designation of the future land use map. It also satisfies the review, the policies for review for the comprehensive plan. All of those are met and for that reason, staff determines this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances.
All right, thank you. Have one person signed up to speak.
Good evening, Members of the Commission. George Stanzial with Stewart, one fifteen, Cofield Circle. This is a, this is a redevelopment project. I think everyone is pretty familiar with Lowman's Plaza. It's been there for a very, very long time. It was built in the late sixties. It was renovated in the eighties. In nineteen ninety-nine, our client, Glenwood Development, purchased it and operated it. Lowman's, the Lowman store actually moved out in two thousand and five and since then there have been a number of different retail uses, including exercise gyms, Win Dixie, Lowman Space. The development plans for this project started in two thousand and eight when Harris, there were two things going on. Harris Teeter was interested in moving there and at the same time, there was a very significant road improvement for Hillendale that NC DOT was doing. So it took a lot of coordination between what we wanted to do, NC DOT and their project, but what we did get out of that was a, was a full movement traffic signal right at the entrance to the project, which has been very, very useful. So a significant, significant investment was made on the behalf of our clients to renovate this project. Harris Teeter, as some of you may know, decided that they would move to the, they, they chose the Ninth Street site at Irwin Square, which I believe is now open, back behind Irwin, Irwin Mills. So our client began to look at other potential uses and redeveloped this project into a, essentially what it is today, a retail, partially retail and, and a Duke Health facility. And so that process started back in two thousand and eleven, worked with Duke Medical Center to, to provide a medical office building there, an urgent care and so the new, the new Crowsdale Commons is constructed with ninety-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet of retail and office space. In addition to that, there is a new BB and T bank. Currently, there's Duke Urgent Care, Duke Primary Care Physicians, Car Drugs, Restaurants, Dry Cleaners, UPS Store, and the existing zoning Commercial Center. And we're, as Amy said, we're looking to rezonate to CG and I'll explain to you in a minute why, why we want to do that. We do have a note on our, on our plan, our development plan, that basically says, I'm not gonna read it, you can see it in front of you, but basically says that we can't change the center without a rezoning or a new site plan and the, you know, it, it's brand new, it's just open. And the, you know, it's brand new, it's just opened, it's, the reason why we're here is really because we're looking to provide more flexibility within the center as it relates to office versus retail. CG District allows for, for a broader percentage of uses as opposed to the CC District that ties you to some percentages. So, that's really the basic reason why we're here. You can see on this aerial, the BB&amp;T is brand new. It used to be located just south of the site. It moved to this site. Duke Health Facility is the long building that you see there. There's a pharmacy just south of that and then, small sort of support retail and resident, and restaurant just south of the pharmacy. Some of you may recall, this is what it looked like for many, many years. Shows you the back of the facility and the front of the facility. Today, it looks like this. This is the new pharmacy. Of course, there's new signage on site, renovated retail, and the new BB&amp;T bank on the northern side of the site. And then, of course, the Duke Medicine Building. All of these structures were there, they've just been renovated. And again, why, you know, why are we here? We're here because we just are looking for a bit more flexibility so that, and some of it relates to even within the healthcare, the way services are provided. There are certain healthcare services that are considered retail, some that are considered office. And we want to have the flexibility, you know, within the center to allow those different medical uses to occupy the buildings over long periods of time. So, that is, that is why we're here and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
It mentions an increase in square footage. If you were to increase the footprint, would you have to get a TIA?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, above what we have on, above the 109,000 that is on the development plan, we would have to do a new TIA.
So, if you were going to, you're 95,000 right now, right? Is that right?
We're at 98,000, including the bank.
Are you planning to?
Frankly, it's all parking driven, so, you know, it's, it'd be very difficult to even add space. Believe me, we had to work some magic just to get it to work the way it is, so. And a lot of times with medical uses too, they, in particular Duke, they usually like more parking spaces than are required to serve, you know, their clients. So, no, there's no plans. It's newly completed. It's, it's just done the way, this is really more about internal uses.
Anyone else?
In the, in the development plan, you have one additional entrance that go out the rear of the property to the, where the, is that for vehicular traffic or is that for truck traffic?
Robert? It's just general vehicular.
Yeah. I mean, the question, I mean, the concern is additional traffic on that little strip.
Right. And again, you know, if this were redeveloped, a new TIA would have to be done. It would include, you know, they'd have to look at potential improvements to the site or to site driveways and so forth. That's not anticipated in anywhere in the near future because it's a brand new project, it's done, it's just, just open. But we wanted to have the flexibility in the future in case it was redeveloped at some point in time.
Okay, so there's no plans to do it, right?
No, sir.
Anyone else? Get a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I recommend approval of Case Number Z 1300024.
Second.
All right. Moved by Mr. Smutsky, seconded by Ms. Beechwood. All is in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Any opposition?
Motion has passed, 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. We'll move down to Item 7A, the density revisions.
Thank you very much, Michael Stock with the Planning Department. Before you tonight is a text amendment TC 1200012, which is a request initiated by Horvath Associates. It's a privately initiated text amendment to Unified Development Ordinance to modify certain density provisions within Article 6 of the UDO. The applicate, the first, or the original application requested something actually somewhat different than what's before you tonight after revisions were made. The original application that's in your packet requested a specific new type of density bonus to be applied within the suburban tier based upon an existing density bonus that's in the UDO right now that's only applicable within the urban tier. After review by staff and discussions with the applicant, that application has been modified to what is currently shown now. Very, kind of a similar process as to the application that you folks reviewed last time where there was initial application and then through discussions with staff as to what was supportable and what wasn't supportable, it had been revised to what was currently proposed now. So, the revisions or the draft ordinance that's before you now has gone to the JCC/PC for their comment and they issued no concerns with what is currently being proposed. And I will just quickly highlight what is being proposed within the draft ordinance that's in your agenda packet. First, the current density provisions that are in the UDO, any of the fractions are being removed to start out with a base density of just whole numbers instead of fractional dwelling units. The second is to adjust the current residential suburban multifamily major roadway density bonus to include projects that would front along service roads of limited or controlled access freeways. Currently, that language is not in there. That is, that part of it is actually consistent. Actually, I'm sorry, I'll move on to that, I'll discuss something further. The third part is to increase in the RSM and the RUM densities that could be sought with the development plan. It's a process that's currently in place with the UDO, with the RSM and RUM districts where you have maximum densities that are allowed by right and then you have additional maximums that can only be approved with the development plan. The proposal is to change only that number to seek approval from the governing bodies and those densities that are proposed are also consistent with the current comprehensive plan for densities that are permissible within the, or recommended within the comprehensive plan for the suburban and urban tiers accordingly. And then, the other change is to link current density bonuses for residential development in non-residential districts in the suburban tier and also in the compact neighborhood tiers to the respective, I'm sorry, density bonuses that are allowed in the suburban and urban tiers to residential development in the non-residential districts. That's currently allowed in the urban tier for such development but aren't allowed in the suburban and compact neighborhood tiers. And we saw, and staff felt that that was reasonableness to maintain consistencies within the UDO. The applicant, Mr. Horvath, is here to answer any questions and of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wants to speak? Mr. Horvath? Horvath?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'll be very brief and it's more of a commentary. What brought this about was we are working on a lot of properties that are either in a current or future compact tier area near one of the station sites or adjacent in suburban tiers that are adjacent to the compact tier site, namely the South Square area and the Patterson Place area. And one of the things we discovered during that is there's an inconsistency between, in the ordinance, between certain conditions and we're trying to get some of the commercially zoned property, general commercial, to be allowed to have at least a little bit higher density, i.e. the same that multifamily now can do. They can add one more unit an acre and, to their bonus density if they front on a major transportation corridor. The exclusion to that for everybody is that it's, if it's a controlled access, it doesn't count. But if it's controlled access with a service road that allows connection for that development, it makes sense. A little bit of inconsistencies in the UDO and quite frankly, been working with the staff for almost a year, trying to muddle through that. We're not trying to grab everything, we're just trying to get a consistent level between urban, suburban, and non-residentially zoned property and residentially zoned property, to get them all working the same and to support the future compact tiers. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any of the Commissioners wants to speak? Yes, ma'am. Red Board, then Mr. Gibbs.
I'm very concerned about these fractional changes because it's just kind of thrown in here as a, you know, oh, by the way, we're going to round these numbers out, but this is effectively a density increase and I really don't see any good reason for it because you're going to multiply, if you multiply a fractional number or a whole number by a fractional number of acres, you're still going to come up with a fraction. I don't see that anything has changed except that gradually, we're incrementing the density and there's not really any justification given for why.
The, it's a very good point that you bring up. It was determined that to start out with a base density at a fraction, although it's going to be rare that you're going to start out with, say, a whole, just a unit or an acre, plain and simple, there may be instances that that happens and currently that if you have an acre of development and you go by and your density is allowed at a fraction, you don't get to count that fraction. So, whether you institute a policy of rounding up, you're still at the same point, if it's 10 and a half, you get to 11. The second point is that we felt that it was a very minimal increase in density. Again, the request that was initially proposed by Mr. Horvath was a much greater density request in terms of the methodology that was proposed. You're looking at much more substantial density increases that were allowed. So, what staff felt was that the minimal increase of what it mounts to about a, well, it mounts to a .5 unit increase per acre was a nominal increase and was not, and was not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Well, I kind of see what you're saying, but I still, I still don't get it. If the point is that you can't build .2 of a house, then the solution is to round up when you're all done with multiplying the acreage by the density, not to change the fraction to a whole number because they're not rounding up by one. You could be rounding up by a bunch if there's a number of acres involved. And I don't, what I don't see in here is, I see the round numbers are really nice explanation, but I don't see a justification for increasing the density and I would think that needs to be documented here.
Ms. Board, if I might give it a try, Pat Young with the Planning Department. I think there's, there's kind of three elements to that. I think all of that is covered in the brief staff report, but I'll try to emphasize the three points. First and most important, I think, is that what's being proposed here would make the densities in these areas consistent with the comprehensive plan. When the comprehensive plan in the UDO was updated in 2005, 2006, the densities were slightly reduced to the current fractional levels as a means of trying to encourage folks to apply for the affordable housing density bonus. So, the thought process was we would lower the maximum densities to what's in the current ordinance and that folks could come in with affordable housing density bonus and get to the comp plan identified density. I think what's clearly been established over the last six years and then reinforced what was in place since the, really since the late 80s in different forms is that it's not adequately incenting and it hasn't been effective and there's an ongoing process that's looking at ways to incent affordable housing, but this doesn't appear to be it. So, the original policy rationale for the current densities really is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so, really what this does is bring the densities consistent with the comprehensive plan. Second, and I think equally importantly, is that any of these higher densities that are before you would have to be approved through legislative, through the City Council of Board of Commissioners, through a development plan zoning. So, if there's site constraints or reasons that these densities don't work, the legislature, legislators can take that into account and not approve it. And I think, third, and this is kind of a more general statement, the areas that are in question here are really the areas, I think, outside of our downtown and compact design tiers that, where we want to see density and we want to encourage density and that has the existing capacity or planned capacity to support it. So, that's kind of three supplemental pieces to what I think Mike said very rightly. Be happy to take any further questions on that.
Mr. Gibbs?
Well, my question has to do with what, when you were, the basis for this change is for areas served by service roads, you allowed a density increase. And my question is, are these new developments, either this one or any other that this may apply to, will those areas be served by public transit?
The best way I'm going to explain this, it's not just service roads, major transportation corridors, that is 15501, which is semi-controlled access, controlled access, it's all of the above. That's, the control, service road really applies more to 15501 than any other route, I-40, I-85, even 501 North Roxborough Road. But yes, most of the properties, and one of the reasons staff has taken so long to look at this is they looked at all the major transportation routes to see what impact this would have throughout the city, not just the southeast or southwest area where I was looking at. And in doing so, that's where the first proposal I put forth ran into a lot of trouble. They had issues in other parts of the city, which is not what we wanted. So, this kind of got narrowed down and yes, where we're looking at is the rail corridor up from Chapel Hill to downtown in Duke, namely the South Square area along 501, Patterson Place along 501. There are properties along there that have commercial zoning that could take advantage of this, that are adjacent or within the compact sites and near the transits. But there are other areas along major transportation corridors that it also will help, but it's got to also deal with the fact that it's one or a half unit per acre increase. That's, it's not a 10 acre, you know, I'm not gaining 10 units an acre, I'm gaining a half, plus maybe one if I'm on a major, I have frontage on a major transportation corridor. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I, and thanks for your explanation. That answered another one of my questions, so we can move on. And I do appreciate that. Thank you, staff.
Mr. Harris?
So, the purpose of this is try to incentivize developers to include, what do you call it, low rent, affordable housing?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, my question is, would this modest increase in density be an incentive for the developers to include affordable housing in their development?
I could honestly say no. The, and we've had discussions, I've been personally involved with the Planning Department on affordable housing. The incentives have got to be a lot more, it's very expensive to deal with that and no. I'm not going to kid you or try to say something sideways, it's not an incentive. It is, as both Scott and Pat tried to say, it's bringing the UDO into compliance with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan, please correct me, medium density in suburban tier is up, is 12 units an acre. We're not even approaching that. We're talking 11 units an acre and a bonus density of one, that gets you to 12 units an acre. So, it matches what the comprehensive plan says is within the suburban tier. Gentlemen? So... So, it, it's trying to get an equal playing field and I think we missed a very valuable part for our city in redevelopment and that's a key. Commercial property, like was on Lowman's Plaza, good example, but in my case, South Square area, there's a lot of vacant, old commercial property that can be redeveloped as a mixed use. And part of that is it's expensive to do both the commercial and the residential above and the higher the densities that they can get on, even at one unit an acre, makes or breaks those projects. And I think they make for better projects. We're just trying to match up with the comprehensive plan and look at redevelopment. And that's, I might as well go ahead and tell them, the part of this that brought me forward was the old Pepsi property up on five oh one.
Yeah.
Perfect. I think it's a great mixed use site, but it's not really heavy commercial, it's more of an office residential component, right next to Duke University. Service road right there, two roads to get out, shopping right adjacent to a compact tier. Perfect location. It's zone general commercial. And that's what kind of led to this whole thing is we're trying to figure a way of adequately redeveloping that into something that's a good-looking gateway to Durham.
Mr. Chair, if I might to quickly supplement Mr. Horvath's response to Mr. Harris, I, I, and I think I, I wanna say this because this board has expressed so much interest in the area of affordable housing. I think Mr. Horvath answered very honestly, I appreciate that, that any individual project or any individual developer is not gonna be incented to provide affordable housing through this very modest increase in density. But I would say, and I think this is an important point, on a sub-market level like South Durham or, you know, different parts of town or certainly on a citywide or countywide basis, the cumulative increase, the most powerful tool we have in creating affordable housing other than financial incentives such as direct investments, land trust, establishing land trusts, is density. Greater density creates more affordability. It's unambiguous in terms of the research. So, I understand there's other concerns about density, but it's a very powerful tool that contributes to affordability on a macro level.
All right. Dr. Waters.
I, I would, I, I think some of the discussion has been helpful already, but I'm, really don't understand, I don't know about enough, I guess, about the details of the current ordinance. But I wonder if you could, you talk about being consistencies between the compact neighborhood and the, and the suburban in those locations and I wonder if you could tell me something about what problems are created by the inconsistencies that currently exist.
I don't know that it's problems. It's, let me give you an example, maybe that's only way I, and I'm sorry, I'm Hungarian, I gotta talk with my hands. If you have a piece of property, let's call it ten acres, that's zoned currently multifamily and it's sitting along fifteen five oh one somewhere near Cornwallis Road. If I came in to develop or redevelop that property, it's zoned multifamily, I could do ten and a half units an acre and I get a one acre or one unit per acre bonus density because a multifamily along fifteen five oh one, well, it's controlled access, but let's assume it wasn't right in there, and I have five hundred feet of frontage. So, that's in the suburban tier. I'm allowed to do that if it's zoned multifamily. If the same property is zoned commercial, I can't get that one unit bonus. That's part of the inconsistencies in the UDO. It's not so much between the compact tier and the urban and suburban, it's within the suburban tier itself, there's inconsistencies. And that's part of what we've worked with over the past year to try to get a, if you wanna call it a level playing field, 'cause in my opinion, I, you know, people do not, landowners do not wanna lose the current zoning they got or they have retained commercial. So, how do we encourage them to develop it as both, and profitable? They have to do it profitable, they're not gonna do it, to redevelop it and still maintain a good product. And one of that is a small den, and my client, quite frankly, I, I got two separate clients, believe it or not, one in Patterson Place and one up north of, at the Pepsi Place, are okay with the one or two units an acre, that half a unit on rounding up and a one unit an acre gets us a twelve units an acre. It makes the project work. And when we look at other projects and properties down along five oh one and along Roxborough Road and fifteen five oh one business going downtown, it makes sense. These are older properties that need to be redeveloped and it adds just incentive, it's a little bit of incentive. It's not great, but it's just that little bit to make it work. I hope that's kind of, but that's how we've gotten here.
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yeah, I have a question about the, you know, we're talking about half an acre, half a, half a unit increase, but with RSM and RUM, you're increasing quite a bit the density and I wanna know what, why.
The rationale for that is primarily consistency with the comprehensive plan. There, there are already tools in place within the UDO that allow an applicant to request those densities, but through different zoning districts, primarily the PDR, which you folks are familiar with on a regular basis. This is just another tool that a potential applicant can seek if they're already at an RSM and you wanna keep that designation or comfortable with what the development standards are within the RSM or RUM, then they might wanna just seek that rezone, it's still rezoning to it, but, and they would still have to seek the development plan, but it's, sometimes familiarity is, is, makes a lot of people more comfortable with, with the zoning district. So, that was primarily it, to take a look at those densities, maximizing the tools that an applicant can use and also that the city and county have available to them in terms of addressing and having the flexibility to allow for higher densities. Again, the changes are for what an applicant can ask for. The changes are, no changes are being made that are for, at least for the RSM and the RUM for what's allowed by right. So, it, it didn't seem logical to restrict what you could ask for, especially if what you can allow them to ask for would still be consistent with the policies that have been adopted already.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I see this as a good way to incentivize increased densities where we need it and a good way to incentivize mixed use. So, I'll be voting for it.
Anyone else? All right. Can we get a motion?
I move that we approve. I move that we approve TC-1200012.
All right. So, moved by Reverend Whitley, seconded by Mr. Thadgett. All is in favor, let it be known my raising a right hand. Any opposers? Raise your right hand.
The motion has passed, eleven in favor and one against.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move down to item eight A. Any announcements? Who do we have next month?
Mr. Chair, we have three land use cases scheduled for next month.
Okay. Second thing, where are we with the updated members list? We wanted to get an updated members list out to all of the various commissioners via email.
Chair, that was mail, emailed to you all the, the day, I think it was in August you asked me for it.
Right. Okay. Is it possible to?
I could resend it tomorrow if you like.
Yeah, please do.
I shall do.
I think I might have deleted that one.
I'll take care of it.
It's okay. Is that, the dog ate the homework, I'm sorry. Yes. So, any other announcements? Anyone else of all hearts and minds are clear, we'll adjourn.
Merry Christmas, everybody, and Happy New Year.
Yes, thank you. Be safe. All right. (inaudible)